Send the two other email.
Yeah. So take my picture again tonight, Jim? You're right. Take a picture in this. Take a picture of yourself last night in sweats and jeans. Like you did me. Some of those were. So I just came from work. You ready, Warren?
Warren?
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November 17th. And six o'clock, and then we have a work session. So we'll stand, do a pledge of allegiance, and get the meeting started. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor our military, our firefighters, sheriff's deputies, and road workers. As they serve our community here at Rock. Okay. Mr. Edwards, are you ready to do a roll call, please?
Trustee McCall.
President!
Trustee McGuire.
President.
Trustee Mann.
President.
Okay. So under old business, we had one thing, and the view of the CARES Act and prepare for approval. That's pretty important. We just got handed some paperwork on that. So. We're talking about several meetings. Are these the final members, Mr. Wolf?
That's what the fire chief, DC chief, and myself come up with.
Okay. Has any of this been run past legal? So we don't have issues with, you know, use of our money?
This was set to legal today for review.
Today?
I haven't got a response back yet.
Okay. Fantastic.
But what we did is put together, now we, the Fire Department and I have all the different receipts, quotes. Not receipts, the quotes, I think, if you want to ask us individual questions. This maxes out or comes close to within three, four hundred dollars of what the total amount is. We'll probably exceed that sometime along the way. There are two major things on there that you'll be talking about in the regular meeting. One is if you decide to go Zoom, that's on there because CARES Act will allow you to buy the equipment to hold virtual meetings. That's close to the bottom, second by heart of up. There's different, two different quotes in your packet from two different vendors. And then the other one is the larger purchase, which is about four up from the bottom, five up from the bottom, the vendor of choice for the security card system. You have three quotes, they were three quotes received, and you should have in your packet a list of those three quotes.
Okay.
Each quote's about that thick, so we didn't want to kill a tree just to do that, so we have those quotes to show you. But they range between eighty-six thousand to one hundred and twenty-three thousand. And so there's a big range, so whatever you do in those decisions will change this sheet. Because if you go with a bigger vendor, you're getting a larger amount, we have to reduce or delete some of the things off this sheet to stay within the three hundred and twenty-two thousand.
The match is three twenty-two, that's in there?
Well, that's what the county, yeah, thirty-two, it's three twenty-two oh nine six point seven one, and that's per the county auditor. But that doesn't mean that Tracy doesn't have documents that would show something different, if she does, then we have to reduce this list to.
Okay, so you say you have three quotes and several quotes on the swipe cards?
Yes.
Without going into too much detail, are they, scope of work pretty much the same, the three of them?
Yeah, we called three vendors, and the three vendors came, and they had their opportunity to walk with us to every facility. We made sure we tried our best to give them the best view. I have a little bit of a synopsis of what I had when I went over it.
Yeah.
You have three of them, you have one from the Flying Locksmith, you have one from the COPS, COPPA, Security, and you have a third one from HSI Security in Moraine. All three very good background companies. I didn't run background checks, but I called some of their people that they do work for, not a thing negative about any of them. I'll start off with the COPS bid, or their proposal. They showed four-door access at the admin building, which is a five-eighty county unit, and there was actually fifteen doors that have to be armed, so they under-quoted that part of the project. They did include fifteen doors. We do each of your trustee doors, that's four, and you got the little meeting room, five, you got the security.
Okay, well, okay, for like, for instance, our doors.
Right.
Nobody's going in there but us.
Well, you don't have to do that, that's just what we've asked every vendor to do.
Do you guys see the need to have a swipe? If you have a door, and only guys, one person's gonna, you have a swipe, so I don't touch, I don't do it, and then somebody else goes behind and touches it, gets my germs or whatever.
Well, you have those options as trustees to pick and choose what you want. These bids, we showed up every one of those doors, and it was up to them to quote or not. COPS business system did include a security replacement of what you have here now at Station 60. Changing out the old equipment, it's been here since the building was built in 2003. We've had some problems with it over time with Chief Lex and now Chief Wright, but they included a whole new system with their bid. Again, they had different doors down at 59 and at 61, various things on top. On the Flying Locksmith, they had twenty-six doors total on their entire bid. That's all buildings, and so that, so somewhere out of line, Flying Smith, Locksmith did not give enough. Whether you do your doors or we, there's much more doors than twenty-six.
They have two different quotes to try to match the quotes that you have, because they have two different quotes.
I understand that. It did include an automatic gate operator at the fence at the building.
And that's the most important thing.
But the county won't approve it. I called the county today, and they want other people to have access to that courtyard. So we're not allowed to install a power thing there. Regardless, you can remove that from the Locksmith quote to lower the quote.
You mean if we give them access to it?
We'd have to give keys.
No, no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, they don't have to put a security lock on, they could put a lock that's just a swipe lock, so it doesn't have to have a key on it. They can do whatever you want. And I talked to the county as well, and they said they can remove the gate if we wanted to.
Well, yeah, they did offer to remove the gate as well. So anyways.
What's your kind of see about removing the gate?
They can do it tomorrow. So their quote was in the one hundred and twenty thousand range. Third company, HSI, H-I, H-S-I, included the full security and fire alarm system replacement in the building.
What was your bid?
Eighty thousand, two one eight forty. They had every door in all the facilities listed to be locked, so you can delete that quote and bring it down. I don't know how much that would, but they quoted every single door at every single facility. So that's your range between eighty and one twenty.
So the Flying Locksmith is not on one twenty, it's only ninety.
According to the bid, it isn't?
Yeah, if you look at the resolution, you'll see it says not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
The resolution isn't the bid.
That is the bid attached to the resolution.
Well, I'm not arguing with you on what I'm saying, that that isn't what's on the bid.
That is what is on their resolution. That's their bid on the back of the resolution.
Then that resolution isn't right. I have the bid here.
Well, I got this from the man, how can you tell me it's not right?
You say resolution, you just talk about his bid.
The bid on the resolution, attached to the resolution. So you're gonna tell me that I got it handed from me from the man, and it's not right?
Well, write these numbers down for me. Thirty thousand, nine one two.
I'm not writing any of those numbers down, I'm telling you what the bid is.
Four thousand, two hundred, fourteen thousand, five hundred, nine thousand, two two one, fourteen thousand, four one seven, nine thousand, two four three ninety-five, six zero one eight, four four one one.
Who's that one?
I'm sorry, four four one one, four thousand four. Three ninety-eight, and the final page of his bid, twenty-five thousand, one five five.
That is not the bid that I got.
The original.
That's the original, you're correct, that is the original bid, but the final bid he gave is not what you're saying. In respect to the resolution. So I don't want you to possibly give them information.
I'm taking it off the quote submitted to the township. Two meetings, or three meetings ago, trustees, there was a resolution that was written to possibly adopt not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this bid only. And the other two bids had not come in yet. So there's a resolution that did not get into the floor, introduced to the floor, but it was discussed in your work session that day. And that number was in the one twenty range on that written resolution. But again, it didn't get passed, there has not been an alternate bid that I've received that shows anything different than that one twenty bid.
There's a resolution on agenda tonight that has a different thing, and if you were to.
We have to look at the numbers, because I have the bid here, and I just read all the numbers off.
And this is the new bid that they gave right here, and there's a resolution on there.
The trustees need to see that bid.
If you had given the agenda before today, they would have.
Trustees, I'm trying to discuss things with you.
The numbers you gave me, Steve, now, I mean, and we went through the checklist, okay, and I didn't do the, you said a couple changes, I didn't write any change.
Right.
Okay, I came up with one fifteen, three nine five.
Well, that would be the numbers I just gave you.
Okay, so, okay, well, I mean, so, we don't need to argue about that, we're just a little bit close.
Right.
And make a decision.
And tonight, the resolution is just to pick somebody, but you don't have to, you can defer to your next meeting. We just gotta.
We have to go over to approve the allocation tonight?
You can't, you can't keep deferring, they're gonna have time to do the work.
Oh, okay, it has to be done by.
December 30th. So we don't want to delay, that was, I was still finishing my sentence.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So what I'm saying is they have to have time to do their work.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm not proposing any of the three, you guys are the decision makers, I am not. But I wanted to at least get you three competitive bids, because it's above the fifty thousand dollar threshold for the Ohio Advice Code. It requires three bids or more, or state bid, or an RFP, or an RFQ. So we got you three qualified. Tracy worked really hard with the Flying Locksmith, and I got the other two to come in and quote as well, so. The only thing in the Locksmith quote which I did not see is it does not show supplying the fire and the security system on top of the swipe cards for all the buildings.
Because you got a security system on the building, they're not gonna pay for another security system. And the COVID coronavirus, just because you want a new security system, because it doesn't work right, they're not gonna pay for a new one, I can tell you that right now.
Looks like Tracy's already decided we're going to.
I didn't decide anything, I'm telling you the rules.
They're jamming it down our throats.
No, he's jamming it down your throat, and you're just sucking to his behind, and sucking along. I did not break the law. There's no law, no word that says I can't do it aside.
Come in with a no-bid resolution for one hundred and twenty grand.
I can come in and do it just like anybody else.
So you're acting as a trustee.
No, I can bring it, you're the guys that make the decision, I can bring in a resolution. If you're not gonna do any work, who's gonna get it done? You don't do anything but command people to do anything. You're worthless.
Okay, so, so I do see, now Steve did make the comment, Steve made the comment that this is gonna go to legal, it's going to legal today. So the comment of what Tracy said, and I do understand that, you know, the three things, the CARES Act, one of the main things, it has to be something for the COVID. And I don't see replacing an existing security system to upgrade that being part of the COVID. I mean, I see the swipe cards, so you don't touch things, we don't pass germs, being part of the COVID. But I do kind of agree with her on the fact that you said that the Flying Locksmith doesn't include that, the other two do. I don't see that being part of it, we need an answer for Nathaniel on that, will that, will that fly?
Let me explain what the vendors have told me. Your card swipe, but if there's an illegal swipe to a door, the alarm system must be coordinated together. So just putting locks on doors will not have any help to your security system. Whereas now, when somebody enters, opens a door illegally or whatever, the alarm goes off.
All that locks, all that Locksmith, the only thing it's doing is either giving you access, not giving you access.
Yeah, but if you're supposed to coordinate the entire system together, so if there's an illegal entry, the alarm goes off.
Well, that's what the old system should be doing anyway.
No, it doesn't have card swipe. I'm explaining how the card swipe works now. If Tracy has a new bid, then you guys need to get it. And then number two, these two vendors should have the right to take the security system out of their pricing. So in other words, you have to set, as trustees, the standard of what you want. So there's not this bidding of different stuff, so you have almost apples to apples.
I need to hear it from legal, I don't want to get us in trouble.
Right.
Because it's an audit later, yes or no can be used.
Okay, so.
To be legally, need to state it.
You're right about that, you need to hear it from legal, but we're at the last hour. And if you don't, if you don't make a decision tonight, or sometime in the next week, you're not gonna get that stuff into a coronavirus, and we won't have a system, so. Right now, I'm gonna tell you that it takes them time to get the equipment and everything, so we're not gonna make the deadline to get that in by December 30th. They're doing other people's work too.
Like I said, this is already.
Wait a minute, I'm still talking.
It's, it's.
I'm already talking, no, I'm already talking, he asked, I was talking to him, I didn't ask for you to interrupt.
You wanna do this right, Steve, put it out for bid, sealed bid. This is such an inside job from our fiscal officer.
Whatever, Jim, you're always behind the scenes to make a thing.
All right, you got a 2003 security system, if we're gonna.
We won't have it, we won't have it.
Technology in twenty years.
I'm gonna tell you that now, we won't have anything, because it won't get done in time. I've been spending time talking to all these vendors, and they say.
Are we gonna secure our buildings or not?
We can't, if you don't make a decision tonight, it won't get done. You guys keep putting it off, and then you say, okay, we're gonna wait on legal, and then you don't have another minute for two more weeks to make the decision. Where does that put you, puts you in the December.
When you think that, do you mind no one's paying, don't even answer, that's a lot of, I mean, not just that, Nathaniel was looking at a whole list of things.
Right, there, here's the thing.
I'm sure not really the only person feeding him things.
Right. So I can't, and you're kind of asking a question, I can't estimate when he's gonna do that. I'm sure within the next week, I would hope, but we have to get all the bids accurate, because if there's another bid that Tracy is mentioning, you need to secure it. And then you need to put them all three together and replace the old one as what is no good.
I don't understand why you don't look in your package and see that the bid is sitting in there and saying, get a bid for me when it's in the package. If you had have given us a package before tonight, on the table, it's in the package.
So I know next week, I'm just gonna throw something out there, I know next week's a holiday week, Tuesday the 24th is the week of Thanksgiving. But this is very, very important. If we could first, first Nathaniel, can you give us an answer by end of the week or Monday of next week? Call for a special meeting to answer this CARES Act situation, to give, the contract is enough time, that would give them basically the month of December to install the stuff that we want in this whole CARES Act situation. Because I'm sure there's other things that need to be looked at by legal. I have problems signing, you know, we've had confrontation about which quote to take, but I have confrontation, make sure any of this stuff is what is and what isn't legal. We don't want to sign something that we're gonna do and then have an audit down the road and get a legal hassle. Comments, trustees?
I don't think we need to make a decision on this tonight.
That's the comment I just made, I don't think we have enough information to make it tonight without legal representation, legal answer on what we're spending money on.
Now, based on Tracy's comments, what's gonna happen is Flying Locksmith's gonna come in with all new bid. This process is being very tainted already.
So yes or no, that's not what we're talking about, yes or no, we're gonna have a special meeting next Tuesday, Nathaniel? So we reach out to Nathaniel, can you give us an answer on the legalities of these purchases that we want to make for the CARES Act? We're getting this free money from the government, it has to meet certain specifications, certain guidelines. Are all these legal? So we have some backing on this, and then have a special meeting next Tuesday? If he tells us in the next couple days, I'll have your answer in time for that meeting next Tuesday. And we have a meeting, and then decide, maybe we can get the paper to us Monday, so we can have all the quotes and have everything to us Monday. We can look at it, come in Tuesday, prepare it, and prepare the site sign.
So you want a full review of everything?
Absolutely. My signature's going in there. I do want to be cognitively. That's what Nathaniel's supposed to do.
So to resolve the bid side of things.
Yes.
Trustees, you have two bids that have the security systems in it, we're being told one does not. And the second, or the first party has put in a second bid, but the others haven't had the chance to do that. How do we handle that? Do we go back to them and tell them to pull their security systems out of their bid?
We need to have.
I don't know how to do it, right, but I need to know from you what you want to do today, your standard you want. And then we'll go back to all three vendors and say, give us your final bid under the standards of the trustees.
We've been kind of rushed into that, when you do a construction job, you have a scope of work.
Right.
And so everybody's bidding on the same package, and that, so that same application needs to apply here. So, yes, let's ask the Flying Locksmith, will you, can you give us a bid that includes replacing, repairing, replacing the security system in this building? And in the same light as COPS?
COPS.
COPS and SMI, SMI to take theirs out. So we have a set of bids, whether Nathaniel says yes or no, we have a set of bids that has the same scope of work.
And the only discrepancy I see laying here beside that is the number of doors. And you guys have to decide what that is, that'll lower and raise each of the bids. But, you know, it depends on that, but that'll be the only thing I think you'll see next, whenever you set this meeting. The only thing I see that you'll have discrepancies on. Because all three companies will come back and change their bid, you know, based on what you've asked them to do.
So, Trustee Mann and Trustee McGuire, are you willing to proceed with having a special meeting that's a lot of extra money, but I advertise it and all that, next Tuesday? Are you available? Or you will be in town? Are you willing to do that, Mr. Mann?
I'm gonna be in town, yes.
Mr. McGuire? I'm sorry?
I will be here.
I will be in town, okay, so let's proceed with that, Mr. Wolf, please.
And trustees, I need to make sure it's clear, I'm asking, I'm the only one talking with the three companies, so there's not other parties trying to change stuff. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be the responsible party.
Okay, so let's move on that thing here.
Question. All right, let's take this building right here. You got this back door, you got the front door, you got all these offices over here. On the other side, you have the outside door, the back door. Then you got rooms inside of it. So you're saying that all these rooms that's over here, we're gonna have a swipe card?
Yes, outdoors. Yes, the fire department's asked for swipe cards on their offices.
You're gonna say outdoors, correct? Or are you?
Well, all outdoors, outdoors, man doors to the outside.
You said outdoors, not?
Yeah, man doors that go to the outside from this building.
Outdoors and?
And the fire chief, they've asked for all their offices.
Mr. Wright, Doug Wright, sorry, chief? I presume, I mean, I think you want offices, any, like, your office, you have stuff in there, you want anybody, Joe Blow to, you'll walk in there, and same with Wilcox, anybody else that has. So offices, Mr. Mann?
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, okay. Are you good with that?
I, I'm not really. Yes and no.
Okay.
I mean, I can see you securing this door or that door, but let's say if one of those doors are opened by swipe card, then it's either a person that has a legitimate card or somebody else is breaking in.
Well, for my own, and I don't have it turned on, I'll be honest with you, but, okay, so I have a security device street. Those swipe cards have a memory, and maybe that's why Mr. Wolf is saying that we want that tied into the, into the security system in the building. So it says that John Smith entered this door at this time, you know, Joe Blow entered, it tracks and who swiped, what, when, where.
It does, okay.
So we want that ability, I mean, I have the ability at home, you want that ability, I would use it, but I have it.
If we're gonna spend this kind of, keeping with 2003 technology is crazy. So I think one of the specs needs to be in a group of security, just for the simple reason, twenty years in electronics is a.
Then, then that needs to be explained, when you talk to, if you can, have the time, talk to Nathaniel tomorrow, ask him, are you gonna have this done? Then also, you know, is redoing the security system part of, put that with COVID? Well, at first I said no, I didn't think so, but now if you're thinking of, well, yeah, you want those swipe cards tied into memory of who, what, when, then yes, the security system of the building itself needs to be placed, part of the same movie thing.
But it won't, it won't fill up with COVID.
So Steve's.
Well, let's, let's.
Where did the idea to do security upgrade come from initially?
When I brought the vendors through, they suggested it because.
Well, who initiated just the idea of calling in vendors and we got it?
We had, because the price was so, and the first price we got was so high, we had to have more than one bid.
You're talking just to go to swipe cards, because I don't know the vulnerability of that door here. There's probably administration from twenty years back that still knows how to open that door.
You're talking about the one to the opposite?
A push-button door to our.
To those opposite door there, yeah, no one knows how to tank that code.
Oh, thank you. I got nothing on you there, Doug. You got worried about me doing, no, I don't have time. Okay.
So rewrapping up what I need to do for you is get that answer from Nathaniel, what is covered under COVID, what is not?
Yes.
Second, go to the vendors and explain to them to try to, you know, tell them that we need an alternate quote. The two that supply quotes with security, take that out of their initial quote.
Yes.
And then go to Flying and say, you have to give us a quote with it in. And that way, come next Tuesday, you'll have everything but the number of doors that are secured. That'll be the difference on those bids, okay?
Thank you, Steve.
I'll take care of it, and I'll email you guys what my results are with Mr. Nathaniel and Mr. Peterson.
Okay, do we need to go through this thing, what was your main factor?
Just wanted to go through to see if you had any other questions about things, and this actually worked, because we were able to at least discuss the security system. So you really can't vote on this tonight, because you don't know how much you're gonna spend on the security card system. So I'd say your votes will have to defer till next Tuesday.
You said fifty thousand dollars, and fifty-five thousand dollars, I want to take three bids of that one.
The security is, is one, two, three, or five from the bottom.
I don't know what you're talking about, I'm looking at fifty. I'm looking at fifty-five thousand.
That's up top, and that's not, nothing to do with security.
I didn't say anything about security, I said three bids, and you said you had to have three bids for over fifty thousand dollar bid. Fifty-five thousand is one of those.
Well, this is the fire department that brought this bid, so if we need to throw that out, we'll throw it out. We'll throw it out. Or until next Tuesday, we can go get two more bids. Or they can lower something that they're doing in there and lower it under fifty thousand. It's, it's anything you wanna do. But your firefighters need a place to get the COVID.
I'm just telling you that you said that, Stephen. I'm just asking why there's not three bids for fifty-five thousand.
Tracy, it's because the bid wasn't turned in until officially today.
I'm just telling you what I said.
That's fine, and you're right with what I said, but we didn't have any time to get two more quotes, but, but again.
Did you, did you work on it, Doug, and you got time to deal with that, or is that a Steve thing?
Well, Greg got the billbrie for us, so we can run around and try to get two more before next Tuesday.
I think it'd be easier, I think it'd be easier to go in that bid and have him, um, take something out and make it four nine nine.
That's, yeah, that's a much easier way to do it.
Than getting another, another two more bids.
Especially with the history that we've been waiting.
Right.
What, four years, five years to get that, that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, it's the reality of it.
Right, I understand that.
So I guess what I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to what I said a minute ago. You probably shouldn't vote on the resolution for the CARES Act tonight, because it now changes that might alter the amount of money up or down. If you choose the, you know, one, you know, elect, or a, a security bid, it may be higher than what's listed here, and now we've overspent, and we have to come up with regular money, you know, above CARES Act. So I would, that, that would be my recommendation, is get this information done for the security system. Now do something with the billbrie quote before you vote on all these expenses. That way, you don't it all at once. Just my suggestion.
Okay, good. Uh, go back to the agenda. Um, new business. The, the Zoom meeting, the equipment quotes, that's, we just covered that, right, under, um, second, put it bottom. Is that right, Steve? Or you have something else to talk about in that?
You, you have two quotes to choose from, so one's, uh, ten thousand, and one is what Buckeye submitted at sixty-five hundred. So trustees have to decide, you know, what you're gonna buy there.
Okay.
Which vendor you're gonna use, and then that'll, again, that might change, you know, the, uh, CARES Act. So you gotta look at both those quotes and see which one you think is, uh, not so much price, but better.
Now, I talked with Brian from Buckeye on implementing this, and we don't need to spend a full six grand. We can add cameras to our existing equipment and get a subscription to Zoom, which I think at this point, and that's a, a robust subscription. I think it's up to five hundred people can log into the meeting or something like that. It's the middle of the load package. But that exceeds the biggest crowd we've had probably in ten years, so.
Well, the, the main thing we want in the package to buy is the one that does the transcription.